All right, we're ready to begin.
Hey, it is 6:00 PM on June 9th. And I'm calling this Lacy City Council Work Session to Order. We have an agenda, but we have one amendment to the agenda.
To do so, we have a recommendation from commission on equity to add an additional flag to be flown on a city fight poll, the Juneteenth flag. And so our Assistant State Manager will provide that presentation at the end.
And at the same time, I would like to talk about flying the Missqually flag as well. So we can talk about that at the same time. Given that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I made a motion to approve the amended agendas.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion now actually carries. We have an amended agenda. First up on our agenda is our bond issuance.
Good evening, Council. Some introductions as I get the screen going. Happy to introduce Dave Tragacer. He is a Managing Director at DA Davidson. Longtime city underwriter. Just trying to count out how many bond issues we've done. I think it's six, maybe seven. And wait on, we have a longstanding relationship with Dave and his team. In fact, I was just commenting to him earlier today that I'm amazed that his team has been together so long. So she, what's been happening the last couple of years, I'm very pleased that the same team coming back to help us out. You know, so Dave offered to come before the council and provide a little bond one-on-one, so to speak, to give some information to the council. I think there's only three council members that have actually gone through a public financing with the city. I'm not sure what you've done in your private lives, but so far to say, I've actually never gone through this process with us before. So, you know, again, happy that Dave volunteered to do so. And we do have.
That was a bond reissuance. Refinancing.
Three of those. Yeah. Yeah, I think, Mary, you've been here for everyone that I've been through, so. We do have at least two financings coming up. Maybe a third or 2013 revenue bonds will be approaching or fast approaching 10 years, which would give us an opportunity to refinance. It all depends on market conditions, of course, but we'll be watching that very closely. So two, maybe three upcoming debt financings before us. So it's really good timing that Dave is here to kind of give us some background on what to expect and you know, obviously we'll be here for questions as well. Turn it over to Dave.
Hello, Terry. Thanks, Troy.
But high finance.
You know, pleasure to be here again and talk to the city. When Troy and I talked about what we're going to put together tonight, you know, had been a number of years since you've done and gone to the bond market to get low interest rates. And these are traditionally known as tax exempt bonds. So we need to comply with all the federal rules to issue tax exempt bonds. But once doing that, you get access to the low, extremely low rate fixed rate bond market. And because of the city's excellent credit rating, which we'll talk about in a bit, that gives you access to market bonds all across the country at very low interest rates and generate good demand for your bonds, which factors into those low interest rates. So first page. It's just a recap of the types of bonds that you can issue. And in Washington State, you're allowed to issue what we call limited tax general obligation bonds. These are often called council manic bonds. And they're called that because the council can by its own authority issue those bonds. And these are full faith and credit obligations of the county of the city. You pledge your general fund. You can specifically pledge certain other taxes if you wanted to for a specific project. They're all issued within your 1.5% of total AV council manic authority. And because the city has very few bonds outstanding and your tax base is so large, that statutory authority is very large, about $132 million. Now, that's not to say you can issue $132 million of bonds, but it gives you the authority, if you can identify a source to pay them back, the ability to issue those council manic bonds in the future for specific projects. And that, and because they're a full faith and credit, because of your credit rating, those do have access to low, low, long-term rates. Second one on the list is what we call unlimited tax general obligation bonds. And they're called unlimited because you're required to go to the voters. For example, if you did decide to go to the voters for an issue for police station they provided you that authority. There's a separate statutory authority to that, which is much higher. Obviously, you're not even close to any of those numbers because it's much higher than your council manic authority. So you have tremendous statutory authority. And the good thing about voted bonds is that in addition to the authority to issue bonds, if you get approval from the voters, it also gives you authority to levy a special excess property tax to pay them off. So if they're not paid from your general fund per se, like council manic bonds are. Typically, school districts are issuing most of the voted bonds in Washington State, although all types of municipalities issue, go to the voters for voted bonds, fire districts, hospitals, cities, counties, and the like. Third one on the list are revenue bonds. And these are essentially paid not from your full faith and credit, not from the general fund, but from your enterprise funds typically for cities is water and sewer, storm drain, that type of thing. The city, as Troy mentioned, does have some outstanding bonds. They're issued in 2013. We're looking at refinancing those if interest rates come down again. But, and also as we get close to that 11-123 call date, it gives us flexibility to do that. The security for revenue bonds is the pledge of the net revenues of those utilities, not your general obligation, but that pledge, because it's, you know, governmental essential service bonds are really prized in the bond market. And those also get very low interest rates and you're rating for your revenue bonds is also very high. Next one on the list, local improvement district bonds. You can, you're authorized to issue LID notes and bonds for specific improvements within the, within the city. And of course, the incremental values. And those properties will, you know, pay back the debt service on those bonds. So specific to an improvement district or even a ULID for the sewer, water sewer projects. In addition to long-term bonds, you could also issue short-term obligations or notes. For interim financing, typically this is done for utility projects. If for an LID or ULID, you need to get some construction financing going, but you're not ready to issue the long-term bonds. You don't know what the final cost is. And, but they can be structured as lines of credit, like you see in the commercial market, short-term lines of credit where you draw it down as you need it and then pay it back as you'd like to. Typically, they can be paid back with the proceeds of long-term fixed rate bonds. So those are the typical types of bonds in the market. And then bonds are sold in two ways. And the city has done both of these options. One is what we call a public sale to investors. And this is done for larger bond issues. When you're borrowing for, say, greater than 10 to 15 years. We go to the credit rating agency to get an independent review of your credit. We put together an offering document called an official statement for investors. So they can see the, all the information that an investor want to know about investing in taxes at bonds for the city. And then on the day of pricing, they're priced to investors all over the country at the lowest market clearing rate. There's the, the bonds are opened up to the public, the ban comes in, orders come in. And it's a, it's a supply-demand relationship, just like the stock market or anything like that. If there's a lot of orders for the bonds, then interest rates go down. There's not as many orders, the interest rate is slightly higher. And then they come to what we call a market clearing rate and we, and the underwriter commits to buy all the bonds and close the bond issue. And that's, we've done that for a number of the city's issues. Now for smaller issues, issues less than typically four to five million dollars. Or issues that are shorter term and obligation, either those short-term notes or say something up to 10 to 12 years in maturity. It's often easier, faster and more efficient, less cost due to do what we call a private placement. So those tax, they're still taxes at bonds, but instead of being offered to the public, they're offered, we do what we call a request for proposal and have community banks, other financial institutions provide a response to purchase the bond and put it in their own portfolio. And because, and then we select the lowest cost of those folks respond to an RFP. This is a much quicker, faster and easier process. There's less disclosure from the city involved in that. There's no bond rating. But it often is the most efficient. So those are the two, two methods. When we talk about bonds, we, we talk about issues that go into the planning part of a bond issue. And one of those is what we call the bank qualified status. Under the federal tax rules, if a municipality issues less than $10 million of tax exempt obligations in a calendar year, they can designate their bonds as bank qualified BQ. And what that means is that a purchaser of the bonds can essentially write off some of the cost of the federal tax code of those bonds in their inventory. And so they're willing to accept a slightly lower interest rate because of that tax incentive that the federal government provides for small issuers. In today's market, because interest rates, subject to the last three months, have been near all record lows, there isn't much of a differential between bank qualified and non-bank qualified bonds. But as interest rates rise, as we've been seeing over the last few months, that benefit has grown a little bit. And we expect that if rates continue to go up, that benefit will still be there. So sometimes we size bond issues to go around this calendar year requirement, or even issue some bonds that are taxable instead of taxable, so we can stay within the bank qualified. So it's just one little item we look at in the market. When you issue long-term bonds, I listed this IRS spend down requirements. We have to comply with federal rules. And the main rule is that you have to have a reasonable expectation. You can spend the proceeds of the bonds within an approximate three-year period. The federal government doesn't want you to issue bonds and not use the proceeds. It used to be, in the old, old days, when I first got into the business, you could issue bonds and invest the proceeds at rates higher than the bonds. So there's no incentive to, you can make money by not even doing your project. But the federal government crap down on all that. And plus today's rates are much, investment rates have been a fraction of what the rates are on the bonds. So there's not that incentive. But the requirement to spend down is still there. You have to have that reasonable expectation. And at closing, there are certificates signed by administration of the city to give bond council comfort that they've complied with all these rules. So that's part of the closing process. Reimbursement resolution. I understand you've already talked about that. A reimbursement resolution just allows the city to reimburse itself for proceeds, for, for expenditures that they've made upfront for a project that will be financed with bonds later on. There are rules about reimbursement. It goes back to an old story. I always tell this story about years ago, there weren't any rules that you could, you could go back in time a lot and try to reimburse yourself. They even called them pyramid bonds. You could refinance the pyramids of Egypt. You know, but, but again, the federal bank clapped down. Now they have rules about what you can reimburse. But now that you've passed a reimbursement resolution, the clock starts and you can reimburse yourself for a lot of those expenses, certain architectural, engineering costs, you don't even need a reimbursement resolution for, but other hard costs you would. So those are some issues for planning for a bond issue and you're well on your way. Now I want to talk about the city's credit, which is exceptional. Here's a little chart showing both standard pores and booties, how they rate municipalities across the country in our mini land. Obviously, the higher the rating, the lower the borrowing cost. Because investors are secure, once they see that rating, it increases the value of their bond and they can resell it on the market, depending on that rating. So as long as you can get a solid rating when your bonds are issued, that will guarantee you those borrowing costs. And you can see the factors that go into the rating. We'll talk more about these debt factors, economy, management of the city, your financial performance, all these things. And currently, you folks are, as noted there in the S and P, you're one of the handful of cities that has the highest rating of AAA.
Isn't management the biggest factor?
You know, actually.
Troy does a really good job.
Well, the economy. Economy, economy, financial performance, management. Certain managers start with S, they're really high. For S and P. So the listing of those ratings is shown here on the next page. Six, it's hard to read here. There we go. This is done by, by, actually by, sort of by county, county. So you see the upper left there, it says Othello Adams Benton. You can see as you run down there. And you guys are off seven Thurston. You're the only AAA rated city in Thurston County.
Only one in Thurston County. Thank you very much. Awesome job, Troy.
And then.
When, when has he had a raise by? I think we need to talk about his salary.
But you can see all the folks, you know, the other AAA cities, some are small, some are large. You know, Bellevue, Seattle, Mercer Island, you know, all those guys. Woodway, little town of Woodway, I saw my catch is AAA.
Who?
Little Woodway.
Never heard of it. Is that in Washington?
Yeah, it's in Homish County. Yeah. It's right on the water. It's a little enclave.
Okay.
But anyway, you can take a look at those if you're convenient. What I did for you, and you probably have seen this, this is, this is an excerpt from your S and P rating back three years ago, when you were upgraded to AAA. There's a lot of fun nighttime rating in here. I'm not going to go over it with you. I'll just point out that, you know, look, it's an upgraded, up to, and the red there says upgrade, upgrade, and upgraded. So they upgraded all those bonds to AAA. And the rating reflects strong economy, strong management, very strong budgetary performance, very strong budget flexibility, strong liquidity, strong debt and contingent liability position, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All the details of that are back in this report. You can read about it at fun time. But that's all great. That sets you up for when you do decide to borrow. However, we need to go back to the rating agency for each bond issue. I mean, this is great. It's a good framework, but they reserve the right to change your rating anytime based on new information and the like. But since we've been. But since we've been, since this was upgraded 2009, your tax basis increased. Granted, we've had COVID retail sales. They'll be looking at all the comparables, what's happened over the last three years.
It's only gotten better.
Yeah, we should be in pretty good shape back. Yeah. So they have an outlook in here, say they weren't going to change it for two years, but we passed that two-year period. Okay, just a few little things on interest rate. And this is a five-year history of what we call the bond buyer index. This is an index of long-term fixed rate, high credit quality bonds like yours. And so you can see with, you know, 2019, the pandemic. You all heard about 45-year lows in interest rates. There it is there that lasted for two years until, until the beginning of this year, we've had a dramatic increase in, in interest rates. However, this chart is like two to three weeks old. And if you would look at this chart today, it actually has gone down.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's gone down probably 30, 40 basis points, three tenths, four tenths, a one percent, just within that period of time, which is good.
Know what's influencing that?
Yeah. Okay, so what first influenced this was the huge rise in inflation. Fed, the Fed increase in short-term interest rates for borrowers. And so the bond market, if you're a bond buyer, you're buying a bond that has a fixed interest rate on it. If you know there's inflation, that really erodes the value of your bond because of, you know, your bond's fixed, but costs are going up. So when there's uncontrolled inflation, that spooks the bond market. And yields have to go up to reflect that. And then we had, you know, worth of crane and all that, all that stuff. Typically, bad news is good news for the bond market. Then it certainly means a flight to quality, a flight, money coming into the bond market. But more recently, it came down the last three weeks because we've had a little better, a little better expectation of what future inflation will be, you know? And the bond market is just looking for, it's traded every day. And so it's the most current up-to-date estimate from the world knows about what interest rates will and won't do. So hopefully we'll see more, you know, better news on inflation. All the information that's been done by the Fed to increase rates, you've heard about. The Fed can only control short-term borrowing rates. They can't control long-term tax exempt rates that you'd be issuing, but it does influence them a little bit.
Question. So.
So in the last year, personal debt people paid down the last year, does that affect the markets at all?
Personal debt?
Yeah.
You know, the people that are buying tax exempt bonds are large financial institutions, high net worth individuals. So as long as they've got liquidity to buy bonds and the tax, you know, are they going to change the tax end? Are they going to make any changes? Does it, does Congress or government pick any changes? Like when you have the 1986 tax reform bill, that dramatically affected municipal rates. Are they going to make any tweaks to the brackets, you know, for, for people? That would affect, but not necessarily the paydown of individual, individual debt. Um, here's just a breakdown. What we do, we always like to slice and dice information. The first graph, I know it's hard to read, is what we call the 20-year index. That's long-term fixed rate bonds. As you see, they all, all these graphs mirror each other. The middle one is a 10-year bond. And the bottom one is the one-year bond. And that one has been more pronounced. That's because the Fed, Fed rate increases, which controls short-term rates. You can see the up and down, how steeper it's been for short-term borrowing than long-term borrowing. But all these have gone down in the last three weeks. So that's the bond market. Yeah. Oh, okay, there you go. Troy's, Troy's on.
A little point of order. Those of you that are in council in 2019, I remember I refused to take credit for that AAA rating because there's only one direction to go, which is down, so. So I want to talk about a couple of the future financings. Where's the council's aware of? Tony Estates, LID. And this is an estimated $3 million project. The city has committed $2 million towards that project. So potential $1 million in public financing. This is a, an LID that has about 47 parcels. You can see our timeline, we're in design as we speak, construction next year. And the possible final role in financing at the end of 2023, early 2024. This is very likely a, you know, a direct placement with a bank. You might remember, or those of you who are in council back in 2007, when we did Hang a while, that was a direct placement. That was a considerably larger project than this one. So I, I don't anticipate anything different with this. You led.
Yes. When, when, when there is a placement with a bank, is there also a servicing cost that goes with that?
There is. We treat them very much like a regular bond. We'll ask the council to pass a bond ordinance. Where we do say, like, like Dave said, we don't have to put together a preliminary official statement or an official statement. We don't have to go through the same level of credit discovery, so to speak. It's a, it's an RFP process. So we actually go out and solicit bids from banks. I can't remember how many banks we use, David's quite a few, 30 to 50 or so banks that are out there that, that put in bids on these.
I had one today from the city of Blaine, you know, $5 million RFP and we had nine responses to be evaluated.
It's, it's worked well. It's, we don't have the same reporting requirements. So we actually have to submit up-to-date financial statements. We have to, we had to disclose certain actions that have occurred with the city. We really follow SEC rules when it comes to that. So every year we're thinking about that, that disclosure that occurs. So that, that doesn't apply with the direct placements as well. I might typically have a conversation with the bank every year, just to make sure that we're still doing all right. We, we do provide them our financial statements and our audits, so they can see that we're, you know, we're still maintaining our high level of financial condition.
Rick, are we bringing Tony Estates into the city before we do this? Tony Estates is in the city, right? Are we going to bring them into the city?
Tony Estates up there in the northeast area off of 30.
That's what this is for, right? Sorry, I caught you off guard.
Woke him up.
So we did, we talked about the time.
Yes.
We were not going to.
They, they, they border Lacey though.
Right, but this was a self-initiated project. So if you look at our policy, if the city is doing it, then that's not an automatic annexation. We said we deal with a different process.
And what we, we have is we'll get the, with, with all these various connections, the power of attorney for future annexation, so that we weren't having that annexation occur now, but we would have the ability to bring them into that power attorney, very similar to the capital states.
I remember that conversation.
And that was a conversation council had.
It seems like we're doing all this for them. And they're spending these construction dollars in the state of Lacey. And the fact that they won't go to the city of Lacey, they'll go to the county, seems a little.
But, but this is, and this is a conversation the council had at the time, and talking about this particular project. And it's also consistent with council, current council policies on annexation.
We talked about doing it after.
Yeah, we, we talked, we went back and forth during this conversation.
I remember disagreeing with it, but yeah, okay. Go ahead.
The threat that it poses to public health.
Oh, I know, I understand.
City limits or not, it's.
We should do the project. I'm just thinking they should be in the city too. Anyway, go ahead. Sorry. Okay, the new police station. You know, we've, we've accomplished quite a bit with this project, but we have a long ways to go. You know, we believe this is roughly a $40 million project. As you know, within the 2022 budget, we have about $5 million for both the schematic design and the property of the purchase from the abbey. So we're well on our way. You've seen this timeline before. I think Ashley last presented this to you all. We're currently in schematic design in 2022, which will allow us to set the footprint for the police station, which then would trigger the boundary adjustments with the abbey. That would then trigger the, the land purchase. We'll do the, you know, final design following that in 2023. Exact timing of the debt issue really depends on, you know, the ballot issue, of course. And then, you know, we'll look at where we're at cash flow wise and, and, you know, what makes the most sense. Like construction to take place 2024, 2025. I think we're hoping to occupy the building in September 2025. So like I said, long ways to go. We have done some very preliminary looks at the market. Of course, we're talking about, you know, a year from now, trying to predict what may or may not occur in the markets. So we were very conservative. City manager has approved these numbers. He went through them with a fine-toothed comb. So he is, he's okay with that. So it's looking at, you know, $40 million, looking at all the issue costs. It ends up being around $3.4 million per year in debt service, which using an escalation on today's success valuation, looks like about 35 cents per thousand. By the time we actually start levying the rate, which could be as early as 2024. So just to maybe give you some perspective, the Metropolitan Park District ballot issue in 2018, that was about 47 cents per thousand.
So it's about 12 bucks a month, 13 bucks a month. Is that about the same now where our ABs?
Yeah, this is a little bit different. So if an average medium house in Lacey is $450, $450,000, this is about $160 per year.
Medium, I just heard the median's up to about $2,000 more than that right now. Median's over 500 now in Thurston County. Thinking, they just published numbers the other day. I think it was like close to 550.
About assessed value rather than market value.
The, yeah, the median, median.
Yeah, of course, this, this is.
You know, this will be a, more than likely this levy rate will come down over the life of the repayment. You know, as assuming valuation continues to go up and as, as we add new construction. So that, and we've seen that happen with our current, current levies. They've, they've come down every single year. So wouldn't expect too much to come out of that.
Another reason to annex them in, so you can bring in assessed value. Right?
Yeah. On the finance department, but yes, you are correct.
He's not going to let it go, are you?
He's not gonna let it go, are you?
Dave or Turkey touch on just when we think the, the interest rate would be on a bond for twenty years.
Well, that's a factor. As Troy mentioned, we took the current estimate in today's market and we added one percent to be conservative, because bonds, this wouldn't be locked until you actually priced it, sold bonds at, say, mid two thousand and twenty three. But in today's market, the interest rate for a twenty year fixed rate financing, low threes, somewhere in there.
That's good.
So you figured low fours, then you, you added a point, you said?
Yeah, we just added a hundred basis, right, one, one percent. Low mid fours, T I C, I can't remember.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I think it was right at four.
Yeah.
Three nine five or somewhere in there. And like I said, I didn't, I don't have any, um, I don't have a slide for the refinancing that may, um, present itself next year, but you know, like I said, we'll keep an eye on the markets. You know, Dave's really good about writing those numbers for us and letting us know we might have a potential savings of public monies paying less interest, so.
Yeah, one challenge with that project is the federal government took away our ability four years ago to do advanced refundings, in other words, issue bonds now and then to refund bonds that aren't yet at their call date. Cause your bond isn't callable until eleven one twenty three. So only under current law, we can look at it up to ninety days prior to that date to issue tax exempt refund.
Awesome. And can you remind me where the interest rates are at on that, on that? Yes, it felt like it was way higher than.
So, so that's the longest you can lock your rate in?
Ninety days.
Under current law, we could issue, I don't want to complicate this, but we could, we could issue taxable refunding bonds, but those rates are much higher. That really diminishes savings, but to issue tax exempt refunding bonds, the soonest we could close an issue is ninety days prior to eleven one twenty three, which would be eight one twenty three, you know, essentially a little more than a year, year from now.
I don't recall what the effective rate, but the interest range, um, between the series were between two, two percent and four point five percent, so probably in that three.
It's weighted towards the end, so it'd be closer to the four.
Well, shorter, will, will a shorter lock period give us a better rate?
Well, as we get closer, we won't have an opportunity to lock it until like almost a year from now. But, um, but we have the ability anytime after, because your bonds are callable, first call date is eleven one, you could pay them off at any time after that without penalty as well. So we'll be looking at it starting about a year from now. Uh, and then, uh, looking at the savings, because we want to make sure we get a, you know, a good minimum savings.
How much do we have left owing on that? I'm sorry.
I'm ready for you.
Okay.
So, uh. Outstanding amount is five point six million.
I mean, it's just, we just pay them off.
You could, you can mix.
Extra thousand because of a quarter percent.
You have the ability to use some cash, you wanted to pay some off and refinance the balance, or whatever you want, you have the, as long as they're at the callable date, you have that total flexibility.
Nine one.
We can, well, we know what, we can actually close an issue ninety days, so we could close on eight one twenty three.
But after eleven one, we can pay them off.
Yeah.
I will remind the councils of revenue bonds and the source of the funds.
You're right, you're right. Why would we do that? I mean, unless, unless we have the extra in the utilities.
Right, yeah. We don't have, we, we don't have the set of reserves we have in.
You're right.
But certainly an option though.
Turn things back.
Could we, could we pay them off with general bonds and then issue debt and get the interest ourselves? Can we pay it off with general fund dollars and then receive the interest on that or so?
Well, we would need a, we would need a project associated with, with the general.
But, you know, I'm saying we could, it's a revenue bond. We pay it off with general fund dollars, but then collect the interest and swap it out.
Investment.
Like investment.
Oh.
No?
No, I mean, all the money is green, you could do some, do some substitution, you know, issue some obligation bonds for some board and then revenue bonds, but you, you wouldn't be issuing general obligation bonds to pay off a revenue obligation typically you wouldn't. Maybe under state, I think under state law you could, but.
Well, and probably we're getting better interest in a current environment than what we need by now.
Well, necessarily, I mean, if it's three, three, four percent, where are we getting three, four percent on your thing?
Well, but, you know, these are shorter term obligations, not twenty year, so the interest rate would be lower, and we wouldn't refinance it unless we could get, I'm, I'm guessing, an interest rate that's closer to two percent, you know, to generate enough savings, you know?
Yeah.
It's four percent or two and a half or something like that. Oh, um, this is just a hypothetical timeline for a bond deal and you can see the steps, one to ten, but the target date is about thirteen, thirteen weeks roughly it takes. And for any bond issue, any bond issue is done, is coming to the city council for what we call a delegation bond ordinance. You folks would need to approve it, no matter what security, no matter what issue, no whether it's short term, long term. And within that ordinance, it would delegate to staff the ability to finalize a bond issue subject to parameters. The main parameters are maximum paramount, maximum maturity of the bonds, how to refunding, any minimum savings, uh, maximum interest rate, those types of things. That delegation would only extend for a period of time. Typically, it's no more than a year or nine months. But, but usually when we come to you with that bond ordinance, we're in the process of a financing, we're starting this, and so a bond deal would be coming down the road within a, you know, a couple of months. That's it. I put some nice nighttime reading in there, first pictures of my, my, our rankings, our team.
Reading.
There's my, that's my picture when I had a mustache and all that stuff, but, um.
You really have been doing this for a long time.
Oh, yeah. Nineteen eighty five.
You're fine to the co-business.
It's coming back. Do you want to have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Okay, yeah. It'd be nice to have a, you know, for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So next up is the track it permit system. Hey.
See everybody.
See you.
Going good. Ryan's gonna start out, and then I'm gonna show you some of the online stuff, so if he's.
Does everyone know what this is? You wanted to give a quick overview of what this new system is?
Correct, yeah. Did you want to give the overview, Ryan, or? I think that was a go ahead. So.
Deliberated you.
Yeah. Um. We've been, uh, uh, for the past couple of years, we've been rolling out a new software for our permit tracking system. The, uh, old Navline system was fairly old and, and, uh, wasn't quite cut for the, the modern environment, and also didn't have any online permitting presence. Um, so we made this decision a couple of years ago to, to purchase new software and roll it out that would, uh, give us some more tools in the toolbox for customer service. Um, it wasn't a fun rollout. Um, I only got the last little bit of it here since I joined the city in September, but it, uh, because of COVID, because of, uh, some issues with the onsite versus, um, web based, uh, program. Uh, but we finally went live, uh, last week and, uh, change is hard, uh, so. But it, we, I think we're really starting to see the value of the system and what it can do now that we've got our hands on it and our plan for it, so. Um, so it's gonna just get better as we continue to refine our, our processes to use the strengths of the system to be more efficient and, uh, effective in our jobs.
Including you can pay for the permit with a credit card. Okay, sorry.
Yes, we are.
That was one of the long time, yeah, downfall of it, so you had to come in and pay with this stupid check, you know?
So, so during the pandemic, you know, that was, we had to have a presence in city hall just for that reason and, and to get all the paper that we're also trying to phase out a little bit, so, you know, over time. Um, but yeah, there is a credit card reader at the, at the front counter now. It has been very popular. And, uh, we also, uh, through the online portal, we can take credit cards online. And we're working on setting up, uh, A C H payments, uh, which is more beneficial for the, um, larger.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it would be benefit like, uh, home builders who are paying a bigger chunk.
Sounds like your line of credit or something.
Uh, it's like an E check.
Yeah, straight from your account, so someone comes and pays a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Three percent of that is a disincentive. Um, so with that, I'll let, uh, Ryan kind of walk through the, the back, back part of the project where the weasy everything. And the, I need to show off some stuff on high.
So we are passing interest rate to the consumer.
Yeah, actually, it's a pretty slick system because most times that I've used that, um, this comes right off the top, so it never hits our books at all. So, yeah, it is very nice.
So I will give a quick overview of kind of what it looks like under the hood, and Grant will provide an overview on, on e-track it, which is our online web portal. So what you can see on your screen right here is, um, what we all call track it. So as part of this, um, launching this program, the, the company Central Square, that we currently have a contract with, that, that it did our old, um, you know, DOS based permit tracking system in, in Navline, they changed the name on us, and so, um, what was called track it is now called community development. So if, if you see that at the top, that's not actually our department name. It's the name of the product, but, um, it is extremely confusing when the, the name of your product is basically the same thing or same name as your, as your, uh, department. So we, we continue to call it track it. So if you hear of the word track it, that's what we're talking about is this system here. Um, I'm just gonna kind of do a little three sixty tour real quick, so, um, this, what you're seeing here is called our workspace. Um, this is where any employee, if they get a, a review or, uh, like a permit to review, a project to review, uh, uh, any of those kinds of things, as well as any inspections or code compliance cases, this is where they, they do all these things, and a lot of this is automatically generated when, when things are entered into the system, and the employee is often notified by email that they have something new that's appeared in their workspace. Uh, I'll mention that this is tied to our land management system, so the, one of the difference between, main differences between track it and our former system Navline is this is much more geographically based than it is kind of sequentially. So we're, we're operating more on kind of finding things by addresses rather than having to know a specific permit number to look something up. So this is, uh, kind of the next generation of permit systems in that it's, it's much more geographic based. So moving on down the line, this, um, this covers all of our projects and planning, so this is all of our land use applications. Uh, things like conditional use permits, subdivisions, uh, public works, uh, civil engineering drawings as well are a part of this. Permitting, uh, permitting covers the gamut of, uh, permit applications, so things like, uh, accessory dwelling units or new single families, all the way to a large commercial project and everything in between. So it's, it's all con- contained within our permit module. We do use a license module within this, not for business licensing, which is what it was originally intended for, but we use this for our rental registration program. So we do require on an annual basis, all of our multifamily developments to register with the city, um, to, for crime prevention purposes, uh, and they have to pay an annual fee to do that. Uh, this is where we can generate and keep track of, um, bills and those kinds of things associated with our rental registration program. We also have code compliance as a part of this. Code compliance is code enforcement, so keeping track of code enforcement cases uh, along the way, violation notices and those kinds of things. So, um, that's the main part of what we use this for. I did want to bring up, uh, and just show you real quickly, uh, a permit. So it's got some nice, really very functional search parameters in this, but one of the things that you can look at is the last kind of twenty entries that you've been working on. So I'll just pull up here, this is a, an accessory dwelling unit, uh, permit that I was looking at recently. So it's much easier for our staff to be able to see everything associated with the permit than used to happen through Navline. Navline was a very, uh, or continues to be a non intuitive system. This is much more kind of almost like how you, you would use like a website or something like that. It's much more intuitive than what we've had in the past. So you can see what the status of an application is, where it's located, um, who the contacts, the contractor, the owner, those kinds of folks are. This is where our staff gets in and takes a look at what reviews they have associated with it. Um, we also have things that are called custom screens. This is a way that we can keep track of, uh, for reporting, things like the amount of building footprint, um, bedrooms that have been added, uh, those kinds of things. Uh, we also keep track of our valuation details, and this is how our fees are generated is through, uh, the job value that's associated with the, the project. And then finally, we do have our, our payments, and as, as Grant mentioned, we're now able to take credit cards. Uh, and soon, within a, probably a matter of days, be able to take E check through A C H. Um, uh, credit cards are charged a three percent finance fee, uh, that, that, uh, fee is not seen by the city. Uh, that is a three percent that is passed directly on to the credit card vendor, and so we don't have to keep track of that. Um, ad- additionally, the A C H will have, excuse me, a, a, a two dollar per use fee, but a lot of those will be high value, twenty, thirty thousand dollar permits, so two dollars in, you know, the whole scheme of a twenty thousand or thirty thousand dollar uh, permit fee is, is just, uh, drops in the bucket versus like what could be a three percent. Uh, this is a relatively new permit, otherwise it would have inspections that are associated with it, and you'd see all those here. So again, it's a real, kind of like one page snapshot of everything that has to do with this permit, much more intuitive than what we've had in the past.
Did this directly talk to the assessor's office, so for, cause you're, you're given an assessed value, right? And then how's that information get onto Thurston County?
So we, we do, uh, provide all of our, this, that gets to the last part of what I was gonna talk about here, which is reports. Uh, we do monthly reporting that is exported directly to the assessor's office, uh. So the assessor's office doesn't necessarily look at, um, uh, our project value when as- establishing assessed value, um, that, those are two different things. Um, but what, what it will do is notify that a permit has been issued on a site. Um, and oftentimes that'll, that'll then trigger a, um, assessor field staff to go out and actually look at what, what's been done, and then that's how they base their, um, assess, assessment on is that, that field assessment.
So the assessor won't take the actual cost?
They, they, they know. Bedroom has been added or something like that, but they're not necessarily as interested in the valuation of a project as we are. The valuation is more for permit purposes than for assessed valuation purposes.
And, and that's a, that's a, 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 is that what we're thinking it's gonna cost, or is that what the person says they think it's gonna cost? Estimate of their construction.
And you look at that, make sure it's in the ballpark and that's the reassessor. Market value is what the assessor was at when they're.
And, uh, we compare, the thing we compare that to is actually the cost of construction, so the valuation that we talk about is not, you know, fair market value like you said, it's, it's.
So if I took that, right, that A D O's, uh, seventy nine, almost eighty thousand dollars to build?
Correct. So that's gonna be based on a formula that's based on the amount of square feet and the type of construction, so. Um, so you can see here, it's based on seven hundred and four square feet of residential construction, type five B construction at a hundred and twelve dollars and sixty five cents a square foot. Chances are it's costing somebody much more than that to be able to build a seven hundred and four square foot A D U right now. If I had to guess, that's probably in the neighborhood of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of construction cost.
Ouch.
The last thing I was gonna show you before I turn it over to Grant is just the reporting functions. We, we just kind of tech, touched on a little bit, you can, you can really, I guess, as the name implies, and you can see some of the leftovers from quote unquote track it here, is that we track a lot of different, um, parts of, uh, all of our permits and inspections and those kinds of things. One thing I'll just pull up is, uh, our inspections. This, uh, is a way to, you know, go through and, and, and track a bunch of different metrics that we can use. Um, for example, we can look at, um, how many inspections have been done by an inspector over time, and this is just one aspect. We could look at, you know, building values, we could look at square footages, we could look at all of our permits that have been issued. Uh, this is just one way that we can create very simple reports. Um, so for example, if we wanted to look, um, I'll just do like the last month. Uh, look at, uh, all of the inspections that have been completed by, uh, one of our inspectors. We'll pull up, uh, Ty Carney, who's one of our more prolific inspectors, and we can just view that report right away. So right on our dashboard, we can see how many inspections. So right on our dashboard, we can see how many inspections Ty has done and what type over the last month. So let's see, it's got to go to page two. So page two here will be the the final totals for Ty. So Ty, within the last month, in the last about thirty days, Ty's completed a hundred and seventy five building inspections. And you can see all of them by numbers. So this is just an easy way to be able to track a whole bunch of different things. Um, so much simpler than what we had before. Before, through Navoline, essentially, we had to, you had to essentially know SQL. If anybody knows computer language, uh, doing a SQL query on all of our data to be able to to pull that up. I, under our old permit system, I myself would not have been able to do that. But I've got that like right at the tip of my fingers now where where I haven't before. So it becomes much more of a project management tool as well as you can see much more about, you know, work levels, workloads, workflows, those kinds of things.
And so as an example, those previous reports and like Ryan mentioned, SQL, I can pull a baseline report. But then I'd have to take that and on my desk, you know, scribble out, break it out on my own. I couldn't just get a customized report where now this feature will be able to pull that information to kind of know what workflow looks like for folks.
Can you show it? Show us what it's like for us, for someone to actually get a permit? I swear we haven't talked ahead of time.
Can you pull up your screen again? I just wanted to talk. So Ryan kind of hit on the on the look and feel and some of the differences with Navoline that. Click on your workspace, please. So everybody in the office can customize their own screen. So you can see what they care about. Um, the My Tasks up there, uh, oh. Because he doesn't have any tasks. Um, but the reviews, you can set that to see, uh, just what your reviews are or what, you know, he can check to see what Ty's got on his list. Those are all populated, um, some by get notified by email if they choose, but they show up automatically. So when you log in in the morning, you see your tasks for the day, including inspections and any reviews that are due. Um, on the side there, and you can customize these as well. You can see, you know, the most recent permits that you've been in and just get a sense of what's going on. Yeah, and so, oh, and I'm sorry, those are mostly automated, those workflows. So when when a new single family dwelling permit comes in, uh, we know who has to review it. So it automatically assigns it to those people so they see it right on their desktop.
So this is going to be considerably more efficient than the old system.
It is. And the other part too, in the search function, Ryan mentioned earlier, you can submit to enter an address or a parcel number, my property comes up. And you can see on one screen all the tabs of all the different permits. Where before you'd have to go in and out of each permit to find out what that permit was for. So now we'll be able to see across the tab, we get the permit history on a particular parcel. If an issue comes up, it's going to be much easier to figure out, okay, have they got through their proper permits or what's going on?
Sure, if we're getting into the center.
The other thing I'll mention while Grant's maybe pulling up the the eTrack it portal is, uh, all of our inspectors now have iPads in the fields, uh, or in the field, sorry. Uh, the, all their inspections for the day are automatically loaded into the the iPad every morning. Uh, and in fact, it even sends them a suggested route for the day. So it's got a map and an aerial photograph and, um, and it will also have, um, one thing I didn't point out here, um, all of the the materials that are submitted through our online portal, which at some point will be like all of our plans and everything, will be available as an attachment in in Track It, but also be viewable out on an iPad on the in the field. So that'll eliminate a lot of not only plans being submitted at our counter, being, you know, archived down in the basement, but we'll also have plans available, you know, by the the inspector out in the field who can, you know, make notes, do those kinds of things, take pictures. And then it's automatically gen, uh, it's not automatically updated. It needs to be manually pushed to be updated, but it will be updated in real time versus our whole system, which was every morning, we printed out pieces of paper, put them on a clipboard, took them out into the field, wrote notes on the on those papers, and then brought them back and did data entry on those in the afternoon to put that in. So it's all done out in the field and it's done essentially instantaneously.
And the even the choosing the the result of the inspection is is super intuitive. It's just a little scroll bar and you scroll until you get the right one and you hit it and you've resulted the the section. So, um, so far the inspectors are really pleased with the. Except, uh, Kevin Noah, the other day, was holding his iPad and was trying to take drink orders for Starbucks. All right, and I need to share that screen, right? Are any, or is is anybody concerned about the possibility of losing their job through this much greater level of efficiency that we're having?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Is there going to be any job losses because of this? We we have so much back work that we can be doing. Um, this is definitely more efficient and but it's going to free up resources to do other projects that, you know, are, we just can't get to right now. That's the odd issue. There we go. This is actually, we just got the test system up today, so this is not real data. So I get to show you a little bit more than than I would have. So from our website, when you get it, uh, this is the the main page. You can, um, as either a public or a contractor, and the benefit of having.
I think we need to, um, turn off the pause of the screen share.
Press the play button so you can see on the right hand side, there's a play button that's green that will resume your share.
You have to pull up your website all the time and then share.
Yeah, I think that isn't the bottom far left when you do your screen share?
You have to go to Zoom, right?
Yep. Bottom far left, is that it? Under.
Bottom left.
To eTrack it, right there. ETrack it. There's too many people telling me what to do. Sorry, Grant.
No, here's the issue. I've been staring at screens for two weeks as we set this up. I'm virtually blind. All right. So this is the the landing page or the, um, the system, the the online portal. This is linked directly from our community development page, the permitting page on our website. And so from here, um, either as a contractor, you can apply to be a contractor. And the value there, uh, is that you get, um, all your license information stored in the system once. So you don't have to keep re-entering a lot of that, uh, that information. And the public can also, uh, apply. So on the on the construction side of things, you can apply for permits. You can pay your fees, um, search, uh, for permits, not just yours, but, uh, others. On the land use side, same thing. Um, the inspections, you can schedule online, uh, for any of the permits you've got. And then this will be our rental registration licensing system. So again, kind of the the nice thing about, uh, a modern program is, um, the rental registration program we're setting up to send out automatic notifications to anybody who's got a, got such a facility and is getting that license every year and can send out reminders. So if they haven't come in and and paid their fee or gone through the, uh, training with the police department, they get a notice, you know, at the six months into the year and keep reminding them. All that had to be done, you know, with a phone call. All right, so I'm going to log in as public. You can't type when people are watching. So these are actually not my permits, permits that I've just linked to. So you can kind of see that there's some out there. Um, these are the ones that that are active, I've applied for or are in the process someplace. Um, looks like some of them are approved and, uh, some of them are, uh, the permit's been issued. So approve means it's been reviewed, it's ready to get paid and go out the door or through the portal. Um, these are the inspections that are outstanding. Um, and you can see that some of them are unavailable. Um, that's kind of a sequencing thing because you can't get a final before you've done, you know, all the other inspections. So it won't let you schedule something out of order so that keeps it, you know, keeps it in in sequence. And then these are the projects would be the the planning land use permits. Uh, right now, we're looking at pre-submission meeting some tree tree permits on. So on these as well, if you click on inspect on a permit, you've got basically all the information that we can see in the system available to you. So you can see what it, what you applied for, um, where you live. These that are due are, uh, patched, um, all your inspections, including the results and any notes that the, uh, inspectors have left in the field. And again, as, uh, Ryan said, that's updated, uh, throughout the day. So it's it's nearly instantaneous that a contractor could go in and see what we've said about their project. You can also see there's no reviews on this one, but you can see where it is in process and who's, uh, who's got it in front of them at the moment. And they said the the custom view, so we have just for like. So a lot of information, so your tips that we didn't have before. To apply for a project, I'm going to set up pre-sub. So you had a drop down list of these are the only ones available right now, but we're going to roll out the the others as we get used to the system. Oh, yeah, I can't see anything. And okay, the other cool feature is it checks your address against our, as Brian mentioned, against our geographic information system. So it won't allow you to apply for a permit if you're not in the city limits. Um, we do do things in the urban growth area though. So for those types of reviews, you can apply if you're in the UGA, but not if you're in the city or the county. So it gives kind of a pre-screening. So here you can upload any attachments. I'm not going to do that, but that's where we get the plans and the and all the specifications. There's no limit to how many you can do. So eventually we won't be going completely digital. And of course, it's going to lock up during the demonstration.
Are we taking old permits and?
Yes. Yeah, we've, uh.
We've got everything that's that's been done in Navoline since nineteen ninety nine. So we've got twenty-three years of records.
So I can go, I can go back and look at a permit that I issued?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you.
Even though I do have to create my own login then?
You'd have to create a public account and then link the permit to that account with the permit number. And then you'd be able to see.
Well, if I don't remember the permanent number.
You could search by address or by your name and see all the.
And it doesn't cost anything to become a, do a public login?
No, no. And, you know, again, you can also search other records as well, just for you. You can see what's going on elsewhere in town.
So as as parcels are annexed into the city, then the administrator just adds those parcels in?
Yeah, let's see, again, the the nice thing about that is it's based on our GIS map. So as soon as our our IS department changes the city limits, that automatically then works with our system to to know that you're now in. So there's no, you don't have to enter all the parcels, you don't have to do any, anything manually. It just, it just knows.
Are there other jurisdictions in Thurston County that are using this system or?
Not in Thurston County, there's quite a few in Washington State. And, you know, we're, we're kind of watching them to see how they deploy it. Um, the other thing we're doing though, and I I think I mentioned is we're going to be looking at our processes to to see how we can even leverage this stuff further to help, uh, better serve the public and and be more responsive and help ourselves, um, get through our day. And.
Probably wouldn't work also if you're not in the correct zoning with the project you want to do also there.
No, it's not that smart. We still need to have the planner, uh, take a look at it. As the on the plan reviewer for the building side of things, but, um, yeah, yeah. It's it's been pretty slick. Again, there's been a lot of teething problems, but, uh, ultimately it's going to serve us really well.
The program's not as smart as planners, what I heard.
That's. You can't program this. So, um. Nobody wants to.
I was just going to mention one other thing. Uh, we, um, couldn't have done this without the help of a couple of key employees. First of all, Marcy Price, uh, in our department, Marcy is retiring in two weeks. And this has been her her project for the last two years. And and we absolutely couldn't have done it without Marcy's help. And then the second person I just want to give a lot of thanks to is Grant. Uh, without Grant coming on board, this never would have been possible in my my mind. Grant has done this before for other jurisdictions and and came with the expertise, just kind of like right out of the box to be able to do this. Fantastic help all the way, all the way around. And while it's been a team effort, the the, you know, team of of Grant and Marcy has just been excellent. Grant's going to take this over after Marcy retires and and push it down the road even further. So we're really excited about the future, but many thanks to to Marcy and Grant.
Yeah, no, um, it's a team effort and, uh, not just in our shop, but Public Works and IS has been fabulous through the whole thing. Um, and finance as well, we work closely, uh, to make things more convenient to to our customers. So it's definitely a team effort. It's possible, they'll pay for that.
This is server based?
It is, and that was part of the rollout problems. We, uh, initially purchased a cloud based version and it just wasn't performing the way we needed it at the end. And so when we got the on premise, uh, version, so the IS department hosts it. I love that because they're fabulous. Um, uh, when we did, they did that conversion all through COVID without any face to face interaction with the contractors. Um, it just took a little, it was a struggle, more of a struggle than we expected.
So form based code and, you know, what midtown now, what the district in this? Is there many examples, I mean, it would just roll it out, right? So if you want to do a permit in that in that area with form based code, this is.
Well, the the permitting function is going to be the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Grant.
No.
The permitting function, it's going to be the same. How you apply the standards is still going to be that staff review. It's just it's going to be more efficient being coordinated with this online and tracking through the online system. So the system is not going to apply those standards. It's going to be the the staff that's going to be interacting with the system, but this just makes it more efficient for them to interact with it.
More efficient and also puts more information out so the the applicant can see what's going on and see all the documents and that kind of stuff. Where, you know, yeah.
Very cool. Thanks. Any questions? That's awesome.
And I just want to emphasize that Ryan was saying, because I wanted to wrap up too, but, you know, both Ryan, Grant and Marcy have been the kind of the core team. But it is, it's as Grant said, there was a lot of effort from all the other departments to support this. And it wouldn't be able to be happened without that. And as just this, the, uh, starting off with that cloud based premise is one example. Midstream, we had to pivot to bring it on premise and our IS department and our finance department. And everybody else came to, uh, uh, support that effort. And it wasn't unified with all the departments. So very rarely is there a project that we can just say that's just one department because we all have touched each other some way or some miles and make it work. So I just want to appreciate Grant, Ryan and Marcy and their effort, all the the development review, Public Works and Community Development staff, but also all the other supporting departments that lend to this effort.
That's our our second upgrade this year then. And Shannon did the website, now we have new permit software.
When are we going to be able to be in O Texas online? We're working on it, right? I know you've been in touch with, isn't Bermerton doing? Working on it, right? I know you've been in touch with, isn't Bermaton doing online? And do you know taxes online that? Yeah.
Expensive.
Is it?
At least it was last time.
Well, I know, because they have the, they have the software. They're, they're going to sell the software to us, right? That's how that would work.
Yeah, like a nonprofit corporation.
Well, thank you. That's awesome. Really appreciate it. Next up is the ACC Councilor, Sheriff on Board of Health, Scott.
So just a little bit of background, you may know that the state legislature passed a law to expand the local health board. So Thurston County Board of Commissioners in response to that agreed to expand their current board membership from three board accounting commissioners to eight. So to expand that they'll have one travel representative, they'll have a representative representing the healthcare industry. Consumers of the healthcare industry and a nonprofit that's accessing the healthcare industry. And then the other one is they're looking for representation from Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water and Yale. You saw the letter or invitation from the Board of County Commissioners, they're requesting us to serve first net rotation before a two year term. And so this is really an opportunity for council to decide who could fulfill that role. They meet. The second Tuesday of the month, we tried to inquire how long are those meetings? Cause I know that's typically an issue at three.
How many Tuesdays per month?
Plus, so the.
Once a month.
Once a month.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month at three o'clock.
So the times of the meetings vary depending on the topic. So I can't really say it's going to be an hour or two hours. It just depends on what's before the.
And I did receive one letter from Councilor Vasquez. It says, oh, Mayor Ryder, regretfully, I will not be able to attend upcoming council meeting this evening. Since I'll be in travel status, I wanted to write and indicate my interest in serving on the soon to be expanded Thurston County Board of Health. In compliance with the ordinance, request consideration for the appointment to serve my community on this important governing board. For our local health jurisdiction, Thurston County Public Health and Social Service Department, I believe, and well suited represent Lacey on this floor. Due to my education and professional experience, public administration policy. So she goes on and talks about what she does in her day job, which sort of lines up. With some of the, I think would go very well here. So.
I would nominate Robin.
We haven't passed the ordinance yet.
I have a question. Would we have an alternate?
Would there be an alternate? Neither?
You could.
They're asked for a representative, but that would be inappropriate. Maybe we can inquire about that.
Cause I have, I have three points. You know, there probably should be a council member that has the longest term, you know, nothing next election. And somebody with background and something like Robbins.
She was the first to jump at this and say she was interested. So.
I know my uncle, we used to be the vice president of the AMA and we have lots of doctors in our family. Not that I'm a doctor, but. I would serve as an alternate because I feel like I have probably weakest load in committees and boards. Having said that, I don't mind her taking on more if she's, if it's, she's passionate about it. So.
So what is the next step, Dory?
So the idea was obviously we didn't know who would want to take on that responsibility. The thought was we'd take this to the next council meeting on the sixteenth and then just formalize it, just as you did any appointment to an advisory board. And then council would affirm that. We will inquire if they're looking for an alternate. I don't know if they have that in their structure, but we can answer that question too.
My suggestion then for the next meeting would be to nominate Robin up since she has, you know, obviously expressed an interest and wants to do it unless there's any objection or someone else who really wants it, happy to serve, but if she wants it.
I think all of us would be willing to serve. You know, if she, if I, she makes a pretty good argument here with what she does on her day job. So I.
We all realize the last two years, how important.
I think she's a little new to be doing this, but I think she's gone off a lot still. So. Thought I'd put my name in the hat tonight, but if you want to be the alternate. I've got a lot of my plates.
It's great that they're expanding the things.
I do. I agree too. Okay.
Typically don't go to even numbers or like that, but.
Well, I guess in case of a tie, it doesn't go forward, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, everyone think about it and we'll talk again next Thursday, but I think we have a idea.
Council seven would be alternate. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
Well, we resolve it next Thursday. If there's going to be an alternate, sounds good. Look into it.
I think we had one more item.
We did.
And here she comes to talk about it.
Here I am. Well, good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council members. I am here tonight to talk about our upcoming Juneteenth collaboration with Fred U Harris Lodge. As well as a recommendation from the Commission on Equity to fly the Juneteenth flag for the event. So I'm going to start my share or start the screen share and just provide some background presentation. So this was presented to the Community Relations Committee this Monday and at the Community Relations Committee, we went over the, the Juneteenth celebration. You can see the advertisement right here that has gone out on multiple locations. And like Lacy Life, for example, also on our website, but it is inviting the community to attend the forty first Juneteenth celebration presented by the Fred U Harris Lodge. At the Regional Athletic Complex Shelter C on Saturday, June eighteenth from noon to four P M. And as part of that, there's going to be a free barbecue, lunch, games, entertainment, a presentation, and then also time to connect with the community and everybody is welcome to attend. And more information can be found online and I'll provide more information throughout this presentation on, on the event itself.
Don't forget about the free haircuts.
And free haircuts. How could I forget about that, Councilmember? Free haircuts are available. So just, just for some background, the Commission on Equity, which is our newest advisory body here at the city is tasked with identifying and advancing opportunities that will create a more welcoming community as well as continuing critical conversations on race and equity. Seeking greater participation from underrepresented community members and identifying gaps and barriers which would prevent a full participation in government and public policy. So at the Commission on Equity earlier in twenty twenty one, there was a community member that came in and requested that the city partake in a Juneteenth celebration in twenty twenty two. And through that recommendation, the Commission on Equity actually learned that there was an existing Juneteenth celebration that had been ongoing for over forty years. They hold it at the rack currently and I believe they've done so for the last eleven years. And prior to that, they had held it at various locations throughout Thurston County, but they really enjoy being at the rack because it's a great facility and they also love working with our parks department. So as part of our twenty twenty two work plan, the Commission on Equity wanted to take a look into a collaboration with the Fred U Harris Lodge. For the Juneteenth event. So the Commission on Equity has been working on that. And one of the key things that the Commission on Equity really wanted was the city as a collaborator. So not us, you know, coming in and creating a new event, but really working with a very successful community event to make it more successful moving forward. And so the Fred U Harris Lodge agreed to allow us to come on as collaborators for the event.
And the Fred U Harris Lodge is in Tom Water, right?
Correct.
That's why, and that's why Tom Water is a contributor to this as well.
Yeah. And Tom Water was also interested in being a collaborator with the Juneteenth event as well. And you know, hopefully we'll be able to continue this collaboration.
I got an invitation that said City of Tom Water.
I know.
Hopefully not before ours though.
It did.
All right. Well, since Juneteenth is, you know, a newer holiday here at the city as well as Washington state and at the federal level. Just want to provide some background on Juneteenth itself. So in January first eighteen sixty three, President Abraham Lincoln gave the Emancipation Proclamation and this freed enslaved people in areas engaged in rebellion against the Union. Slavery after the Emancipation Proclamation remained entrenched, deeply entrenched in the South. And as the Union Army continued into the South and made advancements, they freed enslaved people as they continued moving through Confederacy states. April ninth eighteen sixty five, General Robert E. Lee surrenders to the Union. And this is notable in the fact that this is, you know, several years, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation. June nineteenth, Major General Gordon Granger arrives in Galveston, Texas and frees all of the remaining enslaved people in Texas. So again, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation. And then that is followed six months later with the thirteenth amendment to the constitution, which abolished slavery in the United States. So in eighteen sixty six, formerly enslaved Texans really started what is now called Juneteenth, celebrating on June nineteenth and shortening that to Juneteenth. And over time, these Juneteenth celebrations spread across the United States and even across the world. In nineteen eighty, you can see Texas made Juneteenth an official holiday. And then in twenty twenty one, the state and the federal government made Juneteenth a holiday. So like I said, we have been working with the Fred U Harris on a collaboration. And one of the main things that the city has been able to provide in addition to some, you know, logistics at the actual event is also communication. We have a really big platform to help get the word out. And so we've really been using that. And there's a couple of examples of the things that the city has done. Up on the top is the banner that will fly over College Street next week, inviting individuals to attend the Juneteenth celebration.
I have to ask you, why are they doing the eighteenth and not the nineteenth?
Great question, Councilmember. They do it the third Saturday.
Oh, they always do the third.
Correct. Yep. That way we can kind of schedule it in, in perpetuity.
Got it. Makes sense. Okay.
Yeah. You can see we've done a website also dedicated to the event. So individuals can scan that QR code that you see on the advertisements that we sent out for the event and they can get, they go to the webpage and they can learn more information, not only about the event, but also about Juneteenth history. And in addition to that, we've also created links to our Black History Month that Hank Shigog provided back in February and Hank Shigog will also be part of the presentation at, at this Juneteenth celebration. In addition, leading up to the celebration, we are going to be doing a city proclamation. And this was the proclamation from twenty twenty one that's in the center. We'll be also be creating flyers for the event. And that's what showcased on the left hand side. And the flyers are going to provide, you know, history of Juneteenth, also a list of the program and different groups from the community that have provided support for the event itself. Finally, over on the right hand side, the city partnering with the Fred U Harris Lodge also created a video to go out on our social media platforms and website and getting inviting individuals to join the Juneteenth celebration. And as Councilmember Kunkel pointed out, enjoy free haircuts.
You also mentioned Shannon that they were going to, there was going to be a baseball tournament at the rack that day too. So there'll be lots of maybe overflow people taking part in.
Yeah, that's a great point, Councilmember Cox. That was another reason why they really liked having that event at the rack was so that they could invite community members and people, you know, just smell the barbecue, kind of ask what's going on and then end up having a really great meal and meeting, you know, individuals they might not have met. So it's really a community attractor. So the program is going to begin at noon and for guest speakers, it will be featuring Congresswoman Strickland, our mayor Andy Ryder, our Chair of the Commission on Equity Thelma Jackson, and then Tom Waters Mayor Debbie Sullivan. Like I've mentioned previously, it will be held at the rack and this slide is just showing exactly where at the racket will be held. So the pointer right here is Shelter C. These are the restroom facilities and the free haircuts will be located over here. The barbecue will be right around here. So if you're looking for some really good barbecue, it'd be right outside of Shelter C.
That parking is finished now? So it's, it's, it's paid, right?
It's not.
No, it's, that's a project for this year.
That's right. I remember it being on schedule. So it is the original flag.
For the, the Juneteenth flag?
Yep.
Correct. Yep. And so as part of the conversations on the events, the Commission on Equity had a discussion about the Juneteenth flag and wanting to fly the Juneteenth flag to celebrate not only the event, but also the occasion of Juneteenth. And so it was recommended that the Juneteenth flag be displayed at the rack and or city hall on the eighteenth and nineteenth. And also to take a look at incorporating this into the flag policy in the future. So the original flag, as the Deputy Mayor just pointed out, is here on the screen. And this was created by Ben Haste, founder of the National Juneteenth Celebration Foundation in collaboration with Lisa Janine Graff. And within the flag itself, there are some symbols that I just want to take a second to unpack. The star in the center represents Texas, the Lone Star State. So the last remaining enslaved state. The burst around that star is for a new beginning for African and black Americans in the United States. And then the red arc behind the star represents new opportunities again for African American and black Americans on the horizon. And then the red, white and blue represent the American flag and a reminder that there are descendants of slaves here in the United States. So turning to council policy on, on flags and flying flags at even city hall, the rack and other various locations. The policy reads that the council has to decide by majority to fly other flags than those that are currently in the policy. And so that is why I am here tonight is to provide the Commission on Equity's recommendation to again, fly the flag for the Juneteenth celebration on the eighteenth and nineteenth at city hall and or the rack. And then also to pursue future incorporation in the flag policy and have the Commission on Equity take a look at the flag policy more holistically in the future. You'll notice there is a star on the flying of the Juneteenth flag. And the reason for that star is there are some supply chain issues with Juneteenth flags currently. And so the city has ordered a Juneteenth flag. And we have also received a Juneteenth flag. So we have one flag that we would be able to fly. However, it's not the long term flag that we would want to fly if we were going to be flying in additional years. So the city is looking into purchasing a much better flag to fly in, in the future that we can get.
I mean, it's the same design.
It's the, yeah, it's absolutely the same design. Unfortunately, a single sided. However, the other flag. When we talked to our vendors, it was at least mid July before they would be able to get us the Juneteenth flag.
Supply chain forever. Guess we're going to fly what we have.
Policy recommendation come before us would be, would it be next Thursday? Were you looking for a vote on it today?
So at this point in time, Mayor, I'm not looking for a policy change. The way the policy current reads is that the majority could elect to fly another flag. So what I am here today is to, to seek if the council would like to move to fly the flag this year. And then we'd like to return to take a holistic look at the policy with further review by the Commission on Equity.
So you want action tonight or next Thursday?
I think tonight. Yeah.
I, I would move that we fly the Juneteenth flag for the eighteenth and nineteenth.
I'll second. Move in seconded. Any other discussion?
By some miracle, we get more flags with the second location.
Correct. If, if we were able to receive the second flag that we ordered, we could certainly take a look into.
Where would we fly the, the one that we have then? Would it be at the rack or here?
Rack or here?
Yeah.
That would make sense. That's what this celebration.
So I've had conversations with the Fred U Harris Lodge and they've expressed interest in the flag being at the rack.
Do they know that it's a one sided flag?
Yes, they do.
We're dealing with supply issues. Cause I don't want it to come across as offensive.
Yeah. They're, they're.
Can we check with Tom Water to see if they're getting a flag and whether.
Councilmember, I have not checked with Tom Water. We certainly can. But Councilmember Cox, to go back to your point, we do have a representative from the lodge also coming to city hall to take a look at the flag.
Oh, great. That's great.
So that will happen tomorrow.
It's probably good fun to have because it just meets signed up kind of man.
Yeah.
So my, my only other discussion point would be in the squally flag. I had Willie Frank hand me on the squally flag and said, you know, the city of Olympia flies the sailors flag. Or the Skoxen flag, a Skoxen flag goes, goes, why isn't Lacy flying then the squally flag? And I said, I didn't have a good answer for that. And so I, I would make a recommendation that we also have the Commission on Equity consider that as well and make a recommendation back to his councils. That's for a separate.
I'd like to add something to that. I'd really like to see them take an overall look at our flag policy. I personally think our flag policy is horrible. I didn't like it, didn't support it when we did it. And I really think it needs to be seriously reviewed.
It's fair enough. So if they would look, look at the Juneteenth, overall flag policy and of course the, the tribe, I, I would really like to be able to fly them.
Flag is an extra flag.
That was kind of my point, what I didn't like about our flag policy is because it's so restrictive. Specifically states the flags that we will fly. And I think it's, it's leaving way too many things out. I think it's, it's leaving way too many things out.
So with that, um, is there any more discussion? Then all of here, that question's gonna probably say, and I, is there anyone opposed, mostly the house that carries? Thank you, appreciate it. Everything to the, uh, commission as well. Okay, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda, so the objection.